Well, good evening and welcome to everyone who's braved the elements to get here. And for those that are joining us online, I'd like to call to order this meeting of the Owasso City Council. And tonight, just as we always do, we will open with prayer and with the flag salute, the prayer will be offered by Warren Lear.
Would you pray with me? Father, we thank you for your blessings. We recognize that every good and perfect gift comes from you. Oftentimes, we fail to thank you for your blessings, but in our community, we're extremely blessed. We're thankful to be in a nation, in a state, in a community where we can worship you freely. Father, we look to you for wisdom. We look to you for protection this evening. We look to you for your guidance in every way. Father, as we go through this, continue through this storm, we pray for protection and warmth for those that need it and pray for all the communities across our country who are either short of power or in need or in danger. Father, we pray for their protection. We pray for your blessing. Father bless us this evening. Give us wisdom, for we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Item number four is roll call.
Mayor Bill Bush.
Here.
Vice Mayor Kelly Lewis.
Here.
Councillor Chris Kelly.
Here.
Councillor Doug Bonebrake.
Here.
Councillor Lyndal Dunn.
Here.
Item number five is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for approval of the consent agenda.
I'll move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Item number seven is consideration and appropriate action relating to a change order for the East 116th Street North and North 129th East Avenue intersection improvement project, and Dwayne Henderson will present this item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I bring for you change order number six, which is the final change order, we hope, for the 116th Street North and 129th East Avenue intersection improvements. If you've driven the project, you'll notice that the project is completed. Punch list items were developed a couple of weeks ago. Intersection is open, being driven upon. Lights are functioning. As the contractor gets through with the punch list items, we'll meet again and have a final inspection and take over ownership of that intersection. During the pavement process of the project, which was pretty much when we were about 90% done with the earthwork and whatnot, ODOT noticed that the pavement quantities were coming in a little bit higher than they anticipated. And as they kept growing, some concerns were brought up that there might be an overrun of pavement and ag base. And when the engineer went back and looked at these items, he had underestimated on a few of these items, mainly due to the right turn lanes that we added to the intersection. These right turn lanes were always a part of the intersection, however, when they went through their final calculations, the right turn quantities were omitted. And that was what was bid on the project. Since the project was bid on the plans to show the right turn lanes to be included, those items were built and therefore need to be paid for. An estimate or a quantity determination came about, and that additional cost for the omitted items are worth $277,569.84, as shown there on your front page of the memo. Being that this is a pavement portion of the project, ODOT pays 80% of all costs due to pavement, where Tulsa County and City of Owasso are obligated to 10% of the cost for pavement on projects. So the result of this would be that the overrun of costs, which are materials that were justified, they were a part of the project, just a wrong number put in the bid schedule. The ODOT portion of this change order is $222,055.87. And then the City of Owasso and Tulsa County is responsible for $27,756.98. Both ODOT and Tulsa County have approved this change order at their meetings, and tonight we are asking that you all review and approve these as well. Funding is available in the project and in the capital improvement fund for the 10% match required for the City of Owasso. At this time, staff recommends approval of change order number six in the amount of $27,756.98, which is the City of Owasso's share, for additional pavement qualities and authorization to execute, an authorization to execute the necessary documents. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about the change order.
Thank you, Dwayne. Julie, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from the council?
Dwayne, when you say pavement, are you talking about asphalt in particular?
No, sir. We're talking about the ag base that is underneath the right turn lanes, the meth [spelled phonetically] beast upgrade treatment that was prepared, the concrete surface that's on top, almost everything that is in those right turn lanes from the pavement all the way down to the subgrade preparation was omitted from the last estimate. We actually went back in some of the previous sets of plans, and the numbers were larger. So for some reason, when they updated their numbers, those numbers for those right turn lanes were omitted and can't give you an answer on why, other than there was an oversight and someone didn't check it in their double checking of the quantities. But it basically turned out to be the amount that was needed to do the right turn lanes on all four corners that was omitted.
Thank you.
I need a second.
I'll second.
Mr. Bonebrake.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Item number nine is consideration appropriate action relating to a request for a specific use permit. Oops, sorry, skipped number eight. Item number eight is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for a specific use permit, SUP 20-04 for Criterion Multi-Use Building Containing Approximately 1.54 Acres and Located South of 11422 North, 134th East Avenue, and Alexa Beamer will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor and City Councilors. As you said, this item deals with SUP request 20-04 for Criterion. It is located here, just south of 116th Street North and west of 169 in the black and white checkered box. It is a 1.54 acre parcel, and it is currently zoned commercial shopping under Owasso PUD 02-02, and it is also within the US 169 overlay district. An SUP is required for all buildings that are going to be proposed over 36 feet in height in a CS district, and that is the case with this specific project. The applicant is intending to construct a three-story multi-use commercial and office building that will be under 50 feet in height. The land use master plan does call out this parcel for future commercial uses, so a mixed use development such as the one that is being proposed is compatible with this future vision. The property is surrounded by residential uses to the west in the form of an existing single-family neighborhood and vacant commercial land to the north, south, and east. A multi-use building is compatible with these existing land uses as long as proper controls are employed with an SUP. Some examples of such controls with this specific SUP is the fact that the proposed building will be set back from the western property line by approximately 80 feet. There will be a 10-foot tall fence and a 10-foot wide buffer yard just inside of that fence along the western property line. Those two controls are to try to buffer the western property line, which abuts the residential neighborhood and this subject property. The trash enclosure will be placed on the eastern side of the building, again, away from the western side of the property where it is neighboring that neighborhood. And the outdoor patio will be oriented to the east, again, to try to buffer for the existing residential, excuse me, residential, single-family neighborhood to the west of the property. The water provider for this subject property is Washington County Rural Water District Number Three, and the sanitary sewer provider is the City of Owasso. This is a map showing the surrounding zoning of the property. As you can see in the, it's called out with this yellow kind of dashed line. It is zoned commercial shopping, as I said, as is the property to the north, south, and east. And then it is zoned RS3 to the west. That is the existing neighborhood. And here is a map showing the land use master plan for the area. Like I said, it is called out for future commercial uses, as is the land to the north, south, and east, and then, of course, residential uses to the west where that existing neighborhood is. Hold on. Sorry, I've lost control of the clicker. It's not working. Oh, there we go. Okay, sorry. So this is the conceptual site plan that was given to us by the applicant. They will take access to the site via a proposed private drive that they hope to construct, that they're working to secure a mutual access easement on right now. As I said, here is that trash enclosure. It's up in the eastern corner. There is the, along the western property line, the fence that they're proposing. It is set back by 80 feet from the western property line. There is a detention pond here on the eastern side of the property. And this is the landscape plan, just so you can get a better idea of that buffer yard that's going to be on the eastern or western property line with, it will be planted with evergreen trees. Here is an elevation drawing of the, I believe this is the eastern side, so the front of the building, the western side or the back of the building showing the trees with the fence. And then this is a close-up on the back of the building, the western side, just so you have a better idea of what it will look like. Planning Commission did vote 4O to recommend approval of this SUP 20-04 for Criterion at their regularly scheduled meeting on February 8, 2021. And with that, staff would recommend approval of SUP 20-04 for Criterion, and I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Alexa. Julie, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from the council? On the privacy fence, I'm guessing that's going to be just a standard 10-foot, some type of wood privacy fence, whether it's cedar or whatever. As far as maintaining that fence after, because obviously those privacy fence, unless it's going to be a composite material, they start looking pretty bad, are they going to be responsible for later on down the line to upkeep on that privacy fence on both sides, the side facing the residents and their side of it?
Yes, they will be in charge of, the property owner of this subject property will be in charge of maintaining the fence. I believe they're going to just abut them with the existing fences. We do have the applicant here, and he may be able to shed a little bit more light on that if you would like, but...
If you wouldn't mind, because I just know, you know, I just replaced mine after, you know, 15 years, and so I know those get, you know, they can get dilapidated looking after a while. So, yeah, that'd be good.
Hi, my name is Braden Cheek. I represent the ownership group for the proposed building. Ideally, we would like to tear down the fences and just construct one new 10-foot fence, but we would like consent from all of the homeowners to do so. If they would rather us just build a new fence, we would just abut it directly with theirs, and we're more than happy maintaining that fence.
Okay, so 10 years down the line, whatever, you know, once it gets old-looking, you'll be taking care of it in the future. Beautiful project, by the way. I think it's going to be gorgeous when it gets up, but, okay. Thank you very much for that. Can I get a motion?
Move we approve?
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Item number nine is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for a specific use permit, SUP 21-01 for Trinity Presbyterian Church, containing approximately 14.91 acres and located at the northwest corner of East 76th Street North and North Memorial Drive, and Alexa Beamer will present this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. As you said, this is an SUP request, 21-01 for Trinity Presbyterian Church. As you also said, it's located on the northwest corner of 76th Street and Memorial, just east of the Barnes Elementary School, and it's shown here in the black and white dashes. This is a 14.91 acre subject property, and it is zoned office under ordinance 1172, which was approved by council in September of 2020. An SUP is required for all buildings that are going to be over 36 feet in height in an office zone district, and that is the case with this specific project. The applicant is intending to construct a religious institution on the property that will be approximately 50 feet tall at its roof peak and around 100 feet tall when you add on the steeple that they're proposing. The land use master plan calls out this parcel for future commercial and transitional uses. A religious institution is a good example of a transitional use because it can provide a buffer between residential and more intense commercial uses. The property is surrounded by residential uses and vacant land currently. A religious institution such as the one that is proposed is compatible with these surrounding existing land uses if certain controls are utilized with an SUP. Some examples of such controls in this case with this SUP is the fact that the proposed buildings are all adequately set back from the property lines, and the facade of said building is going to be made of stone, which will match the character of the area as it currently is. The water provider will be Washington County Rural Water District Number Three, and the sanitary sewer provider for the subject property is the City of Owasso. So this is a map just depicting the zoning of the subject property and the surrounding parcels. As I said, it is currently zoned office, and it is surrounded by agricultural land in Tulsa County, with the exception of Barnes Elementary to the west, which is zoned public facilities. And this is a map showing the land use master plan for the area. As I said, the subject property is called out for future commercial and transitional uses, as are the adjoining properties, with the exception of Barnes Elementary. Here is a site plan, and I apologize, the orientation is different, but north is to the left, so, and south is to the right, so it's just turned. There are going to be two entrances onto this piece of property as dictated by the plat that was just approved. There's going to be one off of 76th and one off of Memorial. This project will be constructed in phases. Since it is quite large, there will be one phase here. I know, I'm sorry, you can't see as I'm using the laser, but there's one, two, and three phases. There will be a detention pond to serve the property just on the southern edge, and this is a landscape plan to give you a further view of that. The plantings meet our code, both along the arterial streets and internally in the parking lot. And here are some elevations. I believe this is the southern elevation, the eastern, the northern, the western, and then here is a 3D rendering, just so council can get an idea of what it will look like when all three phases are completed. Planning Commission did vote 4O to recommend approval of this SUP request 21-01 for Trinity Presbyterian Church at their regular meeting on February 8, 2021. And with that, staff would recommend approval of SUP 21-01 for Trinity Presbyterian Church, subject to the following additional controls. One such control is the signage of the property will be limited to two monument signs, each to not exceed eight feet in height. Another is upon development over the north section of this property, a sidewalk will be required along the entire length of the eastern property line, so along Memorial Drive. And finally, a barrier shall be placed along the southern edge of the site's detention pond to deter children from entering the pond area. This barrier could consist of either fencing or landscaping. And with that, I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Alexa. Julie, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from the council?
Alexa, do you have an idea of what the seating capacity for the main sanctuary is for this building?
I do not. I do know that it will be two levels. There will be a mezzanine as well as a lower sanctuary, and I think there will be seating in both, so quite a few, but I don't have an exact number. I apologize. And I don't know if the applicant made it because of weather today, so I apologize.
Yeah, the applicant is here.
Are you here? Sorry.
Hi, councilman and councilwoman. I am Blake Altman, the Senior Pastor of Trinity Presbyterian Church. The multipurpose space will initially seat a maximum of 400 people.
Okay, so you're going to build a multipurpose portion of it first, and again, just absolutely beautiful church, once it gets, you know, completely finished, just really, I mean, it's just really gorgeous from what we see from the site plan, so.
Thanks.
One question did come up. Do you have, as far as the fencing around the pond, I mean, that was a concern as far as kids, you know, being there, obviously fencing would be better than landscaping. Both would be nice, but just to really have a secure barrier to keep any kids from wandering off. Have you guys given some consideration of exactly what that's going to be?
That's a great question. From what I understand from Dan Alaback and Brett Pfeifer, Dan is the landscape architect, and Brett is the architect, they've both considered various stonework and landscaping to accommodate a barrier of some sort. I don't know what their final thinking is. My sense is that they want to do landscaping other than a fence, just for the aesthetics of it.
Sure.
But they are definitely giving full thought to how to make sure that that complies with the request of the staff.
And I know, I mean, there's really some pretty architectural-type fencing also that they do now with the, you know, that they put around a lot of the government buildings and that type of thing to where there's good security on that. So, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Yeah, I know they've been looking forward to this day for a long time, the church has, so it's great to finally see it come to fruition. Move we approve?
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly. Mr. Bush.
Yes. All right. Item number 10 is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for a specific use permit, SUP 21-02 for Warren Clinic Medical Facility, containing approximately 11.48 acres and located northeast of the intersection of US Highway 169 and East 116th Street North, and Carfitch will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This last item, yes, is another SUP for, yes, another heights-related issue. So it deals with SUP 21-02 in the Warren Clinic facility. This is the location of this property. It is just to the northeast of the intersection of US Highway 169 and East 116th Street North. So it's in this configuration here is the property location. Some of the key facts about this particular case, it's on an 11.48 acre site. The property is currently zoned commercial shopping, or CS, and is also within the US 169 overlay district. And they are here tonight, or this item is here tonight, because they need an SUP for this structure, because it is over 36 feet in height. The applicant intends to construct a multi-story medical facility on this property, which will be 58 feet in height. The land use master plan does identify this area and surrounding parcels for future commercial uses. The property is surrounded mostly by vacant land. There is a church to the east, and there's also some current commercial developments to the south across the street. If you jump over the highway to the west, there's also more intense commercial development in that direction. So in looking at all that, a medical clinic would be compatible with both the vision for this property, which is laid out in the land use master plan, as well as what's going on in this area, the emerging commercial and office uses that we're seeing in this corridor. Due to the location of this facility and the anticipated growth patterns, staff does not really foresee any negative impacts associated with this request. Typically, when we look at these SUPs related to height, we're more concerned about how they impact an adjoining residential area. In this case, there's no residential area abutting this property, and for that matter, really no residential area even close by. So, again, staff does not foresee any negative impacts in that regard. The sanitary sewer provider on this property is going to be the City of Owasso, and I would point out that an annexation, lot split, plat vacation were already reviewed for this property, and a site plan was also brought forth at the technical advisory committee a few months ago, and that one was also reviewed as well. This shows the property and the zoning on the property, as well as the surrounding zoning. It is commercially zoned, a CS. Shows the property in relation to the land use master plan. Again, it is called out for commercial uses, as well as all the surrounding properties for commercial uses. This is the site plan for this project. The structure itself is right here. So north is this way, and the highway is basically where my cursor is here. There will be three access points into this facility that will come off a service road that has basically been designed and will be built on the east side of this project. Shows the elevations of this, of the new building. This is the west elevation, so this is as you would see it from US 169 coming up the This is the south elevation, as you would also see coming up the highway. This is the east elevation, so this is what you would see from the service roadside. And then finally, this is the north elevation, as you would see it, of course, from the north. So as you can see, it's a very attractive structure. It'll be a very iconic structure on that corner, so an exciting project certainly that will be coming into the community. Planning Commission did review this particular case at their last meeting. They voted 4 to 0 to recommend approval of SUP 21-02 for Warren Clinic, and that meeting was held on February the 8th of 2021. With that, staff would recommend approval of SUP 21-02 for Warren Clinic, and I'll be happy to address any questions if you have.
Thank you, Carl. Julie, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from the council?
Carl, do you know when they're ready to get started on this project?
Well, the next stage that they have to do is going to be to plat this property. That'll be kind of the last time that the planning commission and the council see anything regarding the project. We have not been told when they're expecting to plat this property. I'm thinking it'll be in the next two months. I believe they're still working out some final details on the frontage road in terms of who's going to basically pay for the bulk of the construction of that facility.
Thank you.
I'll move we approve?
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake.
Yes.
Mr. Dunn.
Yes.
Mr. Kelly. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Bush.
Yes. Item number 11 is report from city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and councilors. Given the challenges of the extreme cold that we've experienced, I've asked Roger Stevens to come to the podium. There's been some challenges, obviously, in the treatment of streets, water line breaks, and our water tank storage, and some of those challenges have arisen even today. So I'm going to ask Roger to give some details on that. However, you might note that since this report is not on the agenda, in accordance with the Open Meeting Act, we're not able to take questions on these items. So Roger will be thorough. I know the Public Works Department is handling all of these challenges extremely well, so would like to hear from Roger.
Thank you, sir. I'll begin with just the roadway treatment. The snow and ice control program has actually been operating for 24 hours for the last nine days. Just kind of compare in reference to product that we have used. Typically, we use about 100 tons of salt and sand during the winter, during the wintertime. Well, these past nine days, we've already used over 300 tons of salt and sand, and that's counting as we speak. Currently, we have 100 tons of salt and sand on stock. We've got another 50 tons coming Thursday of salt as well to hopefully get us through this next event. And of course, they will, the staff will continue the 24-hour operation until we get all the roads cleared from this last, hopefully last... all the roads cleared from this last, hopefully last event of this, this winter, knock on wood somewhere. Challenges we've had, Sunday night into Monday, when it was really cold, snowing, blowing, the snow was blowing really bad. The product in back of our spreaders actually froze up. It basically turned into about concrete. So we couldn't utilize the spreaders. All we could utilize was the plow, until once we got all the plowing done, then we had to take the spreaders, the trucks, into a heated bay, which the fire department helped us out with being able to put in a couple of the trucks and some of the bays at Fire Station Four and Fire Station Three, also in some other bays down at the support services. So we got all those actually thawed out late yesterday evening and the last night, so that we could get ready for the next event. This next event, of course, I think it's, may have started already based on my radar. The, we'll start with the plowing operations. Again, we'll plow, plow, plow until we get all the, all the snow we can get off the roads, and then we'll start applying products, salt and sand. Once it starts to melt again, then we'll plow and just continue that, that process until we get all the snow and ice off the roadways. Hopefully, just based on what I'm seeing in the forecast, we'll have the roadways cleared by Thursday or no later than Friday of this week. In reference to water distribution, over the last couple of days, we have had three water main breaks. As you can imagine, that is, is a, is a, an environment that's very difficult to work in, trying to fix a waterline break whenever it's this cold outside. The, basically, what you have to do is you got to rotate people. You got to rotate someone about every seven to 10 minutes in and out of the truck, and you've got four or five rotating at one time. And that's about all you can handle before you got to get back in the truck and warm up. But luckily, we've only had three, which is great. We've got a great system and, but those, those three were probably enough if you ask the guys that were working on the, on the water leaks. Also, we've, we've had over 100 calls, at least over 100 calls now, where citizens have called in where their lines are froze up. We do try to unthaw them if we can through the meter can. Sometimes that works, sometimes it doesn't. Just, I just continue to encourage the citizens to, to keep their water running in their house at a very slow stream, small stream of water, a drip. We'll just not do it when it's this cold outside. You need to actually have a very small, thin stream coming out of your faucet, and multiple faucets, not just one. So that's something that they might want to think about. Also, the last, this is issue just recently happened today, and that is the Bailey Ranch Water Tank. We have, we have a multiple of valves and pumps inside the bottom of that tank, and two of the 16-inch valves actually froze up, cracked cast iron. And this cast iron's about an inch and a half thick. So it just actually split the cast iron once it, once it let loose. So what we have to do with that is we've got to, we've got to drain the tank, Bailey Tank, to be able to make these repairs, but also we want to drain the tank now because that water's going to sit there and possibly freeze. If it freezes, it could expand and contract inside of the tank and create even more damage to the system. So the, the water division out there is now draining the tank. Once we get the tank drained, we will actually turn the, the direct feed on from Tulsa through the upper zone, which will keep our pressure up through that time. You know, through the time that we're draining the tank, the pressure will be a little lower. It'll be about 10 to 15 PSI lower than normal, but everybody still should have water. But again, the tank should be drained. We're hoping probably by midnight tonight, about that. But that point, we'll be able to turn on the direct feed, bypass the Bailey Tank in order to get everybody's pressure back up, and then that'll give us time to make the necessary repairs to the, to the isolation valves that cracked. Those valves will have to be ordered, something that you just cannot get through. They'll be have to be ordered and probably take several weeks to get. With that being said, we do have some other ways of getting the tank back in operation. We can put, there's some other fittings that we can put in place to where those valves are at, because it's all hard pipe flange fittings. And so we can, we'll be able to put those flange fittings back in place so we can fill the tank back up until we get the valves. So yes, there's been a lot of challenges, but we've got a great staff and, and every challenge, every challenge that has become before them, they have overcome it tremendously. So very pleased.
Thank you, Roger, for that report, and that will suffice for my report. Other than to say, I couldn't be more pleased with all of our departments for the way they've had to respond in one way or another to this weather event. They've, they've done very well, very proud. And that concludes my report.
Thanks, Warren. And yeah, I concur with that. I just can't even imagine having to work in, outside in the water on a broken water main in this unbelievably low temperatures, so. Report from the city attorney.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Item 13 is a report from the city councilors.
I'll just chime in on what, Warren, and you've mentioned too, Bill, about the efforts it takes for our public works folks to be able to manage equipment and these storms and, and basically, you're on 24-hour watch for this long. It just, it's, it's, it'll make you grow old. I'm doing a little bit of that myself right now, not nearly to the level they are. But I'm just saying it does, I understand how taxing it is, and I do appreciate all the efforts to try to keep our streets clear and keep our water running and just hope that we keep power and, and gas and all the other things that we're used to and take for granted sometimes, operational until tomorrow or Thursday, when things will hopefully start to turn for the better. But thanks again to our public works folks.
Item number 14 is official notices. We are in receipt of these documents. Item 15 is new business. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
I'd like to now call to order this meeting of the Owasso Public Works Authority. Roll call.
Chair, Bill Bush?
Here.
Vice Chair, Kelly Lewis?
Here.
Trustee, Chris Kelly?
Here.
Trustee, Doug Bonebrake?
Here.
Trustee, Lyndal Dunn?
Here.
Item number three is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for approval of the consent agenda.
Move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Item five is consideration and appropriate action relating to the bids received for the 2020 Owasso Market Sewer Improvement Rebid Project. Daniel Dearing will present the site.
Thank you, Chair and trustees. As you mentioned, we're bringing for you the rebid of the Owasso Market Sewer Project. To remind you, this project, this is a replacement of a sewer line that extends from a regional detention pond area that's south and west of 96th and Garnet. It extends across Garnet through the open field of the Smith Farms, the original Smith Farm, not the actual business, the commercial business areas. And it goes all the way up to the Owasso Market area, which is, includes Walmart and Lowe's, and on into St. John's Medical Area. It was originally installed for an ONG office and facility that was in operation there around the JCPenney area, and it's been extended multiple times with multiple developments later in the years. Staff, public work staff began monitoring this line since 2013. There was a lot of capacity concerns as development has occurred. There was some surcharging that was occurring in the system in multiple locations. There's some portions of the pipes that are flat that have caused solids to settle out and require some regular cleaning and maintenance from our operations crews. Future demands in the basin itself will require a 12-inch sanitary sewer line to be able to serve that system, that whole basin. So staff began in-house design in the winter of 2019, and we performed a soil boring analysis in January 2020, and completed design in February 2020, and then we got ODQ permit to construct in March of 2020. The project itself will consist of 3,200 linear feet of sewer line, 12-inch new sewer line. We will be putting a portion of this in a different alignment. I think we talked about this in the past, but it will be along Garnet and 96th Street, and that'll allow a portion of that 80-inch line that's in the open field of Smith Market, or Smith Farms, to stay in place. There's no problems in that line there, and we will cut off all the demand that's upstream of that, and that'll basically be a ready, available line for future development in that field. That 12-inch line will come, come along 96th Street, like I said, and cut it off and, and replace some of the problem areas there around 96th Street and up into Owasso Market Area. And then the new alignment of the 12-inch will also open up a new area for development as well, being along the frontage of the two major arterial streets. So for the price of one line, we'll be able to maintain and keep two sewer lines in place. We bid the project last summer, and we only received three bids, and we brought that before you, and we rejected all the bids at the time. The lowest bid at that time was just over a million dollars. It was Timber Wolf Excavating, but our engineers estimate at the time was around 830,000. So we rejected the bids, as we mentioned, evaluated the project, what happened with, what went on. We talked about 12 to 15 different contractors, about their availability and why they didn't bid. We had a lot of regular bidders that did not put, submit bids. Multiple contractors said that they were too busy with a lot of work that had saturated the industry, and some of them were six months out to be available, and some of them were a year to two years out available. Majority of them said that they would be available in about a six-month period time to build a bid, the project, if we so choose to, chose to do that. So we reestablished a schedule to advertise bids six months from that period, and during that downtime, we looked at the plans to try to figure out if there's any way to save cost to the project. We did reach out and coordinate with the Corps of Engineers to obtain a permit to be able to work around some of the jurisdictional streams and to make some of the work a little bit easier for the contractors around those streams. So we were able to kind of hopefully curb some of the costs there as well, obtaining those permits that usually are lengthy, but hey, we had six months, so we went ahead and proceeded to do that and got those in hand. Another thing we reevaluated was the, just the cost itself, estimating the project. We had other, two or three other projects that were bid around the same time and afterwards. It is really hard to grasp what the cost of projects were going to be in the industry. Material costs were fluctuating quite a bit month to month. Labor costs of the bids were very volatile. So we, we basically just took a collective group of, of costs that were used on our project and used an average price, even though some of them seemed outrageous and some of them seemed more reasonable. Some of, as volatile as it was, we just took an average cost and tried to increase it about 10, 15, 20 percent, and tried to take as much of conservative approach as we could on what we were actually going to see with the bid opening. I hate to say the word unprecedented because it seems like it's used every day now, but we really were seeing unprecedented costs that were being submitted and pricing. So we weren't for sure exactly what we were getting. We prepared for the worst and hoped for the best. We re-advertised the project per state statutes in December 2020, and we opened the bids on January 14th. And this time, we did get seven contractors to submit bids. Jerry's Excavation Incorporated was the lowest qualified bidder at $860,300, which was below our, our engineering estimate, which we had put at, reestablished at around 1.3 million. I think if you'll look at the, the bidders on that, in the memo, the four, we had four bidders that came in underneath the engineer's estimate. But the low bid did come in right about where we kind of anticipated the original bid to be at, so we were thrilled with that price coming back to what we thought six months ago. We had not ever done any work with Jerry's Excavation. We weren't familiar with them. We called the references and got glowing reviews. So I'm really excited about working with them. I mean, there's, there's people who said that they wish they could only use them exclusively, so I'm really excited to see and get new blood in here and use them and get more experience with other, other contracting firms. But anyway, the funding of the project was in the fiscal year 2020 and 2021 West Water Collections Division budget, and staff recommends awarding the construction contract to Jerry's Excavation, Inc. of Holbert, Oklahoma, in the amount of $860,300 in authorization to execute the necessary documents, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you guys have.
Thank you, Daniel. Julie, has anyone signed up to speak on this item?
No, sir.
Questions or comments from the council?
Want to comment is, is obviously Jerry's wanted our business. It's nice to see a nice bid like that, quite a bit under a couple of others that are on that seven vendor list, so good job getting them there. I redid it. And I'll move, we approve.
Just hold on one second. So, Daniel, is, you said you had glowing reviews. Are any, any municipalities close to us, or, I mean, that had used?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty common in the, in the Tulsa area. They've done Broken Arrow work, Tulsa work. So I, you know, they're, I'm trying to think of where the, I've done some stuff for, Kellogg Engineering is a design firm that, that we use often, and they do a lot of small city community engineering work, and they, they do a lot of their work out in these smaller communities out and around, I guess, the Ullagog Lake area. But I, you know, like I said, hadn't ever, we hadn't had any experience here, so it was good to hear that they were a good, good firm.
Yeah, and it's also good that for future stuff that, you know, they'll be aware of us, we're aware of them, and so make sure that, we'll make sure that they, you know, at least we can reach out to them whenever we had, you know, future bids, so that's great. I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Item number six is a report from the OPWA manager.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Item number seven is a report from the OPWA attorney.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Item number eight is official notices. We are in receipt of these documents. Item number nine is new business. Hearing none, I'll entertain, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
I'd like to now call to order the, this meeting of the Owasso Public Golf Authority. Roll call.
Chair, Bill Bush?
Here.
Vice Chair, Kelly Lewis?
Here.
Trustee, Chris Kelly?
Here.
Trustee, Doug Bonebrake?
Here.
Trustee, Lyndal Dunn?
Here.
Item number three is consideration and appropriate action relating to a request for approval of the consent agenda.
Move, we approve.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Item number five is a report from the OPGA manager.
Though I haven't been to the golf course this week, I can safely say there's very, very little golf being played this past week, and that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
No, no ice golf, no.
Hockey.
Item number six is a report from the OPGA attorney.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Item number seven is official notices. We are in receipt of these documents. Item number eight is new business. Hearing none, I would entertain a note, motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Second.
Mr. Bonebrake?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Bush?
Yes.
Everybody have a great night. Try to stay off the roads if you don't have to be out, be careful. Try to stay off the roads if you don't have to be out, be careful.